So it's rolling, right?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go.
It's rolling.
How am I gonna answer this from the library today? What's that?
Must be.
I'm hurt. Anything I assume you're coming?
What's gonna have you? Um, these are Nebraska Fire and Safety. Those...
Oh.
I forgot to get a signed copy for me.
Yeah, thank you. I, um, signed them and emailed them to Kathy.
Yeah, I figured with that binder that, um, the caller's creating, then we would have a signed copy in there. And for...
Then we decided that. I think I signed hers on the second.
Yeah, it was the first.
Four of your ones. Sorry about that.
No, you're fine. I forget all my...
Well, then you kind of have the original.
Okay.
Kathy, do you have your sign?
This is a good receipt.
I think I mixed them up again. I'm sorry.
No, you're good. I like being in the middle. It's like you have your old playpen on.
Don't go, don't go. Lot enough. I just wanted to know if your kids are coming. Hi, Mike.
Hi.
I'm like, now I'm not doing this a lot.
I did. I'm part of the county show.
Welcome to Farm Line. You wanna come over here? What's that, Don?
Mister.
My agenda here. Roll call to order the Banner County Board of Equalization. Tuesday, July 8th at 8:30 a.m. Roll call, please. Don?
Present.
Robin? Here, please.
Present.
Item three, Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the courtroom by the entrance. Consent agenda items.
Moved to approve consent agenda items. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Don?
Yes.
Robin? Yes. Please?
Yes.
Item five, items of business before the board, tax protest hearing. Um, before I give instructions to our, um, protesters, I need a couple of details ironed out. We, um, set a five-minute time limit. How strict? Do you two wanna be on that?
Fairly.
Like if they're presenting evidence and they go over.
Fairly strict. I mean, I think we should try to stick to the... Stick to the deal.
Two minutes over, no? Right at five? I ask because we gotta play it the same for everyone.
Well, I think, I mean, we established five minutes. I think we should stick with five minutes.
Okay. And, um...
We'll be here all day. Could be, yeah.
Katie, do you mind timing these?
Sure.
Um, do you want Katie to give a one-minute warning?
That would be good.
One minute, good?
Yep.
And then, the way I understand this is we will hear from the... Protesters will present their evidence on parcel. Once that landowner is finished, or once that person is finished, then we get Casey's report on that land, on all the parcels the landowner presents. And then we, at the end, when we're all done, then we, at the end, decide on the parcels. Is that correct?
Correct. That's what we discussed.
Does that work?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I got this straight before I... So we'll hear from the protesters. Evidence. And then after they're all finished with their... All their parcels, we will hear from Casey. And I'm assuming you just want my, like, recommendations short and sweet, so...
Please.
Yes, please. And then, um, we will decide on all of them at the end. When we're all finished. Is that... Am I on the right page? Okay. Just making sure. Did I cover everything? And you're good timing, right, Katie?
Yep.
Is there a way to swear people in before we start? Is everyone here that's coming, do you know?
No, we're listening to that.
We have Rod and Kathy Van Pelt, Lane Darnell and Lisa. Brandon Darnell Ranch, right, Lisa?
So it looks like the only one we don't have is Edens and Ron Piper.
Why don't you swear me in individually? Yes, you do.
I can do that.
That's what I would do.
And does Katie swear them in as clerk?
We had a piece of paper. I guess I have no idea.
It's just like someone always swear to tell the truth. Nothing but is it like that?
Yeah.
Someone always swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so how do I... Does that work?
What? Say.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, good. That way it keeps it fair, all the way.
Sure.
All right. Let's roll with it, huh? All right, so everybody can hear and I won't be mumbling up here.
Can I make a public comment?
Not quite yet.
Okay.
So each parcel will have a five-minute time limit. The clerk will give you a one-minute warning before the five-minute time limit is up. Um, each protester will present their evidence on each parcel. You have five minutes each parcel. Once you've completed all the parcels that you are protesting, then our assessor, Casey, will give her recommendation on each parcel. The Board of Equalization will decide at the end. We'll, once all the protests are done, we've heard all the evidence, Katie's, or Casey's given all of her recommendations, then the Board of Equalization will make their decisions on all of them at the end, one by one. Clear to everyone?
My assumption is that we can ask questions if we want to ask questions.
I assume so.
Okay.
You're not gonna have any questions, right? Did you have a comment, Lisa?
Yes, well, two comments. First of all, um, I think that the taxpayers uh, deserve better agendas that we're getting from the Board of Equalization. It says tax protest hearing, but there's many taxpayers that would like to know what parcel numbers or whatever. I think the agendas could be expanded upon. And the other thing is, I don't wanna be here any longer than anybody else. But when you protest one house on one parcel, five minutes might be enough. But when you protest three houses and forty-six improvements on one parcel, five minutes may not be long enough.
So each house would have an individual parcel number, right?
No.
No?
Yeah, you have multiple buildings on...
If they're home.
Parcel. Plus, if we ask questions, that's gonna take their five minutes as well.
Well, the question should be outside five minutes. That's...
Oh, gotcha. I mean, like, at the end.
Yeah.
Okay, got you.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, we have... Good morning, Paul.
Good morning.
Um...
I'm not late. I want you guys to notice that, so...
We'll make a note, Paul.
Okay.
Um, Bev Edens, Casey is... I'm assuming you're... I can't see you, Paul. I assume you're representing Beverly.
Am I up?
No, not yet.
Darn it.
We're just getting rolling.
You're closer.
All right. Can we get a roll?
Yep.
And we, your schedule, Casey, we just go through the binder. Are they in that order?
Yep.
All right, so we will open the hearing at 8:38 a.m. And first one up. Uh, where's my number?
Third line down starts with...
I can just go down this one, right?
Yep.
First protest, Beverly A. Edens, parcel number four zero zero one four seven four seven. Okay, Paul, you're up.
And I have a whole walk-in in five minutes.
You do.
Oh, my gosh.
And Katie will give you a...
I can't do anything in five minutes.
Katie will give you a one-minute warning.
Just for a point of reference, I've done this at Scotts Bluff.
Can I swear in first?
Oh, yes. She'll swear you in first. Okay, raise your hand.
All right. Um, just, I think you just follow what I say. Okay, I do solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence I shall give be given shall be the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now we're good.
Okay, well, I'm, um, my name is Paul Edens and my folks are Beverly and Leray. They are in Grand Island, Nebraska. Uh, ninety, and ninety years of age for my mom and ninety-two for my dad. Declining health, but still... Still a taxpaying landowner in Banner County. And, uh, I'm their power of attorney for stuff in Banner County while my sister handles the legal stuff back in Grand Island. The property in question is the school section. It was purchased by my mom as an investment. I believe that was back in nineteen ninety. It was, uh, it's now in the CRP program. It's got a classification of CP-25, which means it can't be grazed or hay unless there's an extreme draft declaration. Uh, we have no services there such as electricity. Um, there's no buildings, there's no improvements. Uh, it's just basically grassland. Uh, the County Road 27 is, uh, the access road to the... To the north side of it. Uh, most of the road that we use to access it is, uh, is Highway 88, either coming in from the Stegal Road or from, coming in from Mill, Pumpkin Creek Road. Right now, uh, with all the unknowns in our government, the farm plan that's in place right now is, is under the 2018 farm plan. And, uh, so therefore, I asked my mother what she wanted to do with the property, uh, where we have no interest in farming it. And, uh, and I sold my hobby herd of cattle, so I'm not interested in grazing it. Then what we're looking at doing is renewing it as a CRP, part of the CRP program. At this time, I was told by Ms. Kaufman in Scotts Bluff that if it were to be accepted, it's gotta be rerated. And if it was to be accepted, it's going to be three dollars per acre, less than it is right now. So that's a decline in, in revenue. Uh, revenue's not a big issue, but it's always an issue. And, uh, I think the thing that I bear in mind is representing my parents is that they're on a fixed income, uh, live a long ways away, and, uh... But yet, we wanna be supported and, uh, pay the fair share. I believe that, uh, I don't remember what the prior assessed value was, but right now, it looks like it's a two... The proposed value is two thirty-five. Is that correct? What was the... Which one was it?
One eighty-five.
One eighty-five, okay. And I think that, I think that if you take two thirty-five minus one eighty-five and divide that by the proposed, then I think we see an increase of, what, thirty-four percent possibly? So, uh... Uh, they did receive, uh, they have received in the past a stipend around nine hundred dollars per season for walk-in hunting. They're not doing that anymore because of the problems we've had with trespassing drivers, trash, fence posts being shot at for target practice, target practice, et cetera. So, uh, I'm not saying we don't wanna pay our fair share, but I really don't see how much bang we're getting for the buck here when we're raising evaluation on a piece of property that...
One minute.
We don't know if, uh, if we're still going to be able to realize any type of income through the CRP program. So with that, I'm at your mercy. I mean, I appreciate your time and I appreciate your help. I know it's a thankless job. And, um, I hope we can work together on this. And thank you.
Questions for Paul?
So what's a per-acre assessment?
Okay, so right now, uh, when Mom signed, when we signed up for it, it was thirty-eight dollars an acre. Um, Ms. Kaufman said it's looking to be about, at the most, thirty-four dollars. And then, you know, that's actually quite a bit more than some people are getting. Uh, there was a person I was told in Banner County that tried to get their... Oh, Martin Olson. Martin Olson was trying to get into some CRP stuff and it was ridiculously low. So... But it is a... It is a step back, a reduction from what the prior rate was. And I don't foresee a farm plan being passed in the... In our NDC right now, so... In the foreseeable future. Well, we will gladly continue to pay the, or she would continue to pay the assessed value on one eighty-five, but to go up thirty-some percent, no... There's no electricity there. There's no road that's being maintained to access it. It's just, uh...
Is it fenced?
It is fenced, uh, with two wire fences. It's not a four-wire fence. It's actually the long, uh, the longest fence between them. I don't know how many of you maybe own CRP stuff or school section, prior school section. Just on a side note, if you were to do a title search of it, it would go back from... It's really interesting. It actually goes from the current landowner to the state of Nebraska, to the territory of Nebraska, to the Louisiana purchase. So you could say that maybe, uh, you had property that was owned by Napoleon Bonaparte a few years ago, back when I was in high school, so...
Is there any more questions for Paul?
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Katie, just get your recommendations on that one. Do I also need to be sworn in? I'm sorry? I also need to be sworn in for the recommendations? I would think so.
All right, Casey.
I do solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that all evidence I shall give shall be given the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes. Uh, my recommendation is no change.
The assessor recommends no change in case everyone could not hear that.
No change as if...
Were you here from...
For the prior valuation or from the improved, or the increase?
No change from her, from the increase, correct?
Yeah.
She recommends the increase with no...
Of two thirty-five?
I recommend no change from what was stated on the valuation of a study received this year. So the value that's thrown in the protested valuation, twenty twenty-five? So no change. I recommend, I'm not gonna change anything.
So you recommend assessment value be two thirty-five zero three eight?
Why?
That's what...
I'm not getting any road, I'm not getting road service. I'm not getting electricity. We have elderly people. We've not, we've not been in tax arrears. I mean, we're... We're originals here.
So, Paul, that, that's her decision?
Okay.
We can't, we cannot argue it.
Okay.
You'll have to take it up with the assessor.
Is that this young lady right here?
Yes. Would you like my, um, but at another time, you'll have to discuss this with her, like, we're not going to... We, we...
Okay.
We're not, we can't argue the point at this time.
Who makes the final decision? Oh, okay.
And I don't know if you were in here at the time. We're going to hear all of the protests. And then at the end, Casey makes a recommendation on each one, each parcel for landowners, we go. And then at the end, this board will sit and discuss and then make our decisions on each parcel when everyone is done.
If I, um... Will it hurt my case if I leave to go knock some hay down? I need to knock some hay down.
No, sir.
Nope.
And it's gonna rain Friday. So I gotta get down, get it up.
The assessor will be in touch with you
Okay.
on what we decide.
Okay. I wanna try to pick a fight, just to, just wanted to know, so...
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, guys. Don, I have a joke for ya. Can I tell one joke before I leave?
Uh, probably not. It sounds like it's about me.
No, it's not about you. But the things you and my cousin Ron used to do to me when I was a freshman, when you were a senior, were horrible. And I don't bring that up, so...
Okay. Thanks for not bringing it.
Okay. Life's about choices. Options. You have two options in life. You can either be healthy or unhealthy. If you're healthy, that's great. Good. If you're not healthy, you have two options. Choose to get medicine ordered, choose not to get medicine ordered. Well, if you choose to get medicine, that's good. If you choose not to get medicine, there's probably gonna be two options. You're either gonna get better, you're gonna get worse. And get better, that's good, good news. If you get worse, well, then you might have two options. You could either live or you could die. If you live, that's, that's good news. But if you die, that's... You're probably gonna have two options. Either you end up in heaven or you end up in hell. And if you end up in heaven, that's, that's good news. But if you end up in hell, there's probably gonna be two options. It's original flavor or extra crispy, so...
I think your options, options come in.
Oh, my gosh. I headed to Hayfield. Thank you, guys. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Paul.
See you, guys.
Thank you. All right, protest number two, Thomason Carroll Ackerman. Parcel number four zero 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 two three five seven. Are they here? That's us. Hello. We're new to this, so you're gonna have to guide us through it. You're good. Were you here when we laid out the guidelines for this?
No.
Um, we'll hit, the board here will hear your...
We drive in forty-two miles. We're at, we're clear over by Magoo.
Okay.
We sit right on the county line.
You'll have, um, five minutes to present your evidence on this protest. Katie will give a one-minute warning when you have one minute left. Okay? After you've given your evidence, we have a chance to ask you questions if we have questions. After that, then the assessor will give her recommendation is what she recommends to this board.
Okay.
And then, once we hear all the protests today, when they're all done, then the board will make decisions on the protests.
Okay.
Okay?
Like I said, we've never done this before, so...
You're good. You just bear with us. Um, the clerk will, uh, swear you in.
Okay.
You ready?
We're ready.
I do solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence I shall give be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Are you testifying as well?
Yeah. I'm just her husband.
You know more about the farmland. I'm a city girl, so this is new to me. Okay, we're ready to roll.
Well, you jumped our, our taxes way up. Our CRP, we cannot renew, or probably won't be able to renew because they told us that land is not worth anything. We can't grow anything on it. It's gonna have to be completely tilled up, replanted, to even make it for CRP. There's no water for the, for the, um, CRP or for the little bit of pasture that we have. So it's all dry land.
Ninety percent of it is nothing but wheatgrass.
Um, so the CRP won't, won't accept it. And we can't afford to have it all tilled up, completely replanted. The buildings, um, a lot of the buildings are not worth anything. The garage is crumbling, the foundation, the walls on it are crumbling, the house foundation is, um... Is cracked. You can actually see when you walk up the stairs to our upper, upper level, um, in the house. When you get up, you can look at it and you can see where the floor actually leans. And, and Casey even was able to see that. That there's enough, it's not level anymore. So I don't know how it can jump that much money when everything is a year older, it's deteriorating, it's... Some of us, like, the land is not usable. We can't farm it, we can't do anything with it. And like I said, with CRP, it's, if he, if we're even gonna be able to renew it.
No. I'm semi-retired, I'm seventy-eight years old. Paying a heck of a lot more taxes than I ever thought I'd be.
You guys have questions?
I don't.
I do not.
Do you know right off, how much, what percentage this increased? Do you happen to know?
I didn't think of the number.
Yes, it went from ninety-nine thousand to almost a hundred and forty-seven thousand.
I have the total is one thirty-six zero seven one and it increased to one forty-five nine forty-six.
No.
So that's what's on my copy?
Yeah, that's their, what, what their protested value and then the requested. So that's not the increase. If you look at the MIP sheet, it's the previous and the current. That would be the twenty-four's value for previous and current is twenty-five. It's the sheet with the yellow on it. Looks like this.
So if they're noticing the valuation change, it says prior total value is ninety-nine thousand thirty-two. Current value, one forty-five nine forty-six.
Yeah, it's on there too.
Okay.
Sorry, I was on the wrong page. I apologize.
It's okay.
Did you see the head on?
What, what year is this house? Nineteen oh-three originally. Originally, and it's been added on to? Uh, we haven't, uh... Owners two or three times ago did it in, I think, forty... In the forties and then again in the fifties. Is it plaster and lac? Yes. The whole interior of the house is plaster and lac? Is it stucco or siding or... That old Masonite? Okay. Siding. Four by eights or... No, they're... The smaller? Smaller, they're about six by twelve or six by eighteen. And when was that done? Do you have any idea? I have no idea, sir. How long? You've owned this house approximately how long? Uh, two thousand eleven.
Is the house living?
Mm-hmm.
How many square feet in this structure? Upstairs in the house, total, total living square feet, do you know?
I don't know.
No, really? That would be a question. I don't see it, so...
I don't know. Oh, yeah, it's on the second. It's on page two.
Okay.
If you get your bifocals out, you can read those numbers.
I'm trying to decide whether it's bifocals or just long arms. Oh, tragedy. I got trifoc. Oh, okay. I'm getting through pages now.
I can't tell you what the numbers are.
Effective age eighty?
One minute.
So what's the difference between actual and effective age?
Effective age is just a number that's in there. Anyone here doing the review, I didn't get them all taken out, so...
Thirteen hundred and forty-four square feet. Is that correct?
Yep.
Kind of wired, uh... What's that? What kind of wiring is that? Do you know? Uh, most of it is two-pronged plug-ins. Okay. Some of it, I've changed. If you look behind the wall, is it still a knob and tube or is it Romex? Single wire, single covered wires? It's single covered wire most of it. Okay, so it's been updated at some point in time.
Are you guys good with them?
Yeah, have you applied for a homestead exemption? Yes. Okay.
You're done?
And what outbuildings are on the land? I don't, I don't... Small grain areas that we don't reuse anymore?
Yeah.
And their value is?
They're also listed on the sheet where you found the square feet undersides in there.
Are you good, Don?
Uh, I can look at some stuff here. What's the value of the, you have thirty-four acres. What's the value of the first acre on that? That's attributed to the house.
Twenty-five thousand?
How much?
Twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five. And how was, how do we arrive at that?
Do you want to step in?
Sure. Don needs warning.
Sure. Ready?
Yeah.
I do solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence I shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Um, the first acre, my name's Josh Gare, so I'm the one with Cardinal Assessment Group. Did all these improvement values. So, the first acre, uh, we redid. It's twenty-five thousand an acre. And if you look at the pain handle in general, we're kind of in the middle. I mean, it's anywhere from thirty to eighteen thousand in surrounding counties, so we're right in the middle. And the reason it's twenty-five thousand is that first acre includes, uh, you know, your well, septic, utilities. So that's why that first acre is where it's at. But, that's how we came up with that.
Do you understand that? Not really, but you'll have to get with them at some point and talk to them if you want it.
And that's countywide, that's every property in the rural area, that first acre, everyone is twenty-five thousand, so it's the same across the board.
So I, I still doesn't answer the question, how they arrived at those numbers.
Um, we don't have one-acre sales.
Yeah, that's kind of my point.
Right. Um, just to be in compliance, you know, with, uh, kind of where other counties are at, um... We feel twenty-five thousand, I feel twenty-five thousand is fair for that first acre. Just because, like I said, if you drill a well and put a septic in, you're at twenty-five thousand alone on that.
So, so if I owned an acre in Scotts Bluff, my taxes would only be twenty-five thousand. And I'm talking the city proper.
Valuation.
Huh?
Valuation.
My, I, I'm sorry. Thanks for your correction.
So, wha- what did you say? I'm sorry.
Your, your valuation, if I owned an acre in the middle of Scotts Bluff, my valuation would only be twenty-five thousand dollars an acre, it'd be based on that.
I didn't look up Scotts Bluff, because I didn't think that was comparable to here. I'm sure Scotts Bluff's first acre is significantly higher than it is here.
So...
I don't know.
If, what you're telling me is that we, we look at all the surrounding counties, but we don't actually use the values that those counties necessarily have.
Right, we try getting more of an average in the middle. I didn't want to put us at the very high end. We're also not at the very low end. The low end was eighteen thousand, from what I found.
So, it, it just seems to me that that's arbitrary, that you have no sales based on Banner County land to prove what that first acre is actually valued at. It's an arbitrary number you set by some methodology, but nonetheless, it is arbitrary.
Correct, I mean, we have to put a number on there. Any number we pick would be arbitrary.
Because you don't have sales. Aren't they supposed to be based on sales?
Yeah, home values are.
But that includes the ground under it as well.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I have no more questions.
Um, how comparable is Banner County to Su, say Sioux County? Because they don't have a lot of commercial in Sioux County as well as we don't. If you compare us to Scotts Bluff, that's way different.
Right. That's why I said I didn't compare us to Sioux County. I'd have to look and see what they're at. I do have it somewhere. I can get back to you once we talk, when we're done with this.
I mean, that's just a question. I, I feel Banner County's more comparable to Sioux County because...
I would agree with that.
We don't have the commercial and neither do they.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Does anyone have more questions?
None for me.
Done?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Casey, I don't have a recommendation on this one on my sheet.
Um, it's also on the very last page. The MIP sheet with the yellow on it, it's the future value.
This last one?
Yep.
So what is your recommendation on this one?
Do you want me to read that off or do you want me to read it off from the protest form where the outbuildings and the house are combined?
I would say from the protest form. And you might, you might have to come up to the mic so everyone can hear you on this. Sorry.
My recommendation for the land is no change. My recommendation for the house and buildings is seventy-nine thousand four hundred and forty-four, for a total of a hundred and thirty-six thousand and seventy-one dollars.
Uh, land was no change?
Correct.
And would you repeat the house, please?
Um, house and outbuildings, seventy-nine thousand four hundred and forty-four.
Thank you, Casey. All right, first, go forward.
Yes.
You good to go? I wanted to give you some time. Uh, protest number three, Rodney and Kathleen Van Hope. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Uh, Katie will swear you both in.
Okay. You're ready? I do solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence I shall give be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, we're good to go.
Okay. We're just protesting the, the house, because, um, it's never been classified, I don't think, but it's not a stick house or, you know, built from ground up, whatever. It's a mobile home. And that, we feel makes it totally different. And it came out on wheels, two pieces, and then they put it together and bolted it together. And we have no, uh, it's insulation and paneling. There's no drywall. And so... We have, you know, some forms we gave Katie, and I guess I have a few copies, but, uh, maybe you had those.
What did they look like, Kathleen?
It was made in Grand Island, Nebraska fifty years ago, fifty-one years ago.
It looked like this?
I'm sorry?
Yes, yeah.
You had that?
We do.
We put it on a basement. Eleven hundred square feet upstairs, eleven hundred downstairs. Two-thirds of the basement is unfinished. There's no, uh, toilet facilities and baths, uh, basement at all. No, no water down there, because we didn't want any more water down there.
The heat?
The heat is, uh, forced air. We don't use it, they put all the ducts in the ceiling. Your science teacher probably tells you that hot air goes up and doesn't go down. And he was correct, but we didn't listen to him. We listened to the salesman who sold us the house, so. We use propane, uh, insert and, uh, upstairs and down, keep the pipes from leaking down there. Uh, it could be moved. They can move any kind of a house that, uh, they can get wheels on it, so it could be moved. But it is classified as an old home.
The prior building value was thirty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy. It jumped up to a hundred and nine thousand two hundred and four.
Two hundred and what?
Two hundred and four.
We have forced air, but it is, uh, the unit is fifty years old. And, uh, we're lucky that it lasted that long, because I asked the guy that come out to recharge it, uh, last week, they charged us five hundred dollars to do that. He said a new unit would be seven to eight thousand, so we're going to keep, keep the old one as long as we can. I hope yours is as good as ours.
Any questions?
Yeah.
So, my question is, what is the difference between a modular and a mobile? Probably, do you guys know or?
Typically, just the quality of construction. A modular is going to have two-by-six walls versus a mobile home without two-by-fours and paneling. A modular might also have drywall on the interior versus paneling. And Katie and I did make a correction on this, and we think Casey reran it as a mobile home after she talked to a member of them. So we are recommending a different value.
You're recommending what, sorry?
I'm, um, don't want to get to it then, but I'm recommending changing it from, um, single-family, which is called a classified modular, to as to mobile or manufactured home, but that's not.
All right, guys. Do you have any questions with us? Yeah?
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Um, Casey, would you clarify your recommendation on this? Sorry, I'm following through on the numbers here.
You ready? My recommendation on the land is no change. The building's eighty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-six. For a total of a hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and sixty-three.
One minute.
Um, buildings with the building in the mobile home?
Uh, yeah, there's only a home on this property.
I'm sorry.
There's only a home on this property. There's no... Okay.
Did you guys, any further questions? You, too bad after that conversation.
No. We're good.
Okay.
We've got a funeral to go to. I'd rather put up a, but...
Uh, Casey, we'll let you know.
Okay.
What we decide in the end.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for coming. I'm going to go forward in a minute.
So the, the new recommendation was what, yeah? Because I've got so many pages here.
Just look on right here.
Yeah.
This is Casey's recommendation, right here.
So you're going to go with their request this way? Don?
Uh, I made the changes and that's what the value was.
Are you good? Yes, morning. Sorry.
Uh, protest number four, Julie A. Rogers, parcel number four zero zero two three six zero eight.
If you look at this one, it says she's not attending, so we skip down to Lane and Robin Darnell.
Right, but I have to just go to check.
I didn't know if we were waiting for the end, I'm not, sorry.
No. And Julie's not here, so we can discuss that later. Item five, Cross Family LLC, parcel number four zero zero one four three five. Any cross family members there? Protest number seven, Cross Family LLC, parcel number four zero 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 one five three nine. Not here. Protest number eight, Lane and Robin Darnell, parcel number four zero 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 six six four. And Lane is here. I'm going to, um, step back at this point because I have a conflict of interest, as this is my parcel and my husband, so I will not comment, I will not ask questions, and I will not time nor in the end will I vote.
Good morning. My name is Lane Darnell.
Lane, can I swear to you, please?
Yep.
Sorry. I do solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence I shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Absolutely. Good morning. My name is Lane Darnell. My family and I have lived in this county for over a hundred years. I am protesting property identification zero four zero 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 six six four, based on lack of equalization... And inaccurate data on buildings. In other ways, other words, quality condition or the way they were classified. I have amended my numbers a little bit, because the first time I did it, apparently I made a mistake. So there is an amendment showing the change on the building on this property. The house is the first thing that I'm going to protest. The house is a farm labor house. It is kept in as best condition as I can, but it is not of average quality or condition. It has, the assessor has it listed as fair quality with average condition, which changes the depreciation value, which is part of what I am protesting here, is depreciation on a house that is over a hundred years old. The only reason it's in this condition is because we keep repairing it. And it becomes apparent to me, we keep raising the value of these houses to replace them, but it keeps costing me more to replace, to repair them every year, because they are wearing out. But we keep paying more taxes. I have a comparable house here that has quality as fair and condition as worn out badly. It is the same type of house, about the same age of house, but the house we have is an average condition. If we reduce that to a fair value, it increases depreciation to eighty percent. That's where I get the change in the value of the house, down to twenty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. The second building that I am protesting on is the shop building that I built ten years ago on this property, that the assessor changed from a farm utility building to a light commercial building. And I don't know how I turned in from agriculture to commercial, but I'm protesting from the fact that as a commercial building, I lose the ag reduction of it, and it increases the value of it. I have a couple other buildings out here with the same size as mine that are valued at quite a bit less. The average of these is about fourteen dollars and fifty cents a square foot, where as a light commercial building, mine is at forty-plus dollars a square foot.
One minute.
I'll give you these. As for the rest of the buildings on this property, the card that I received from the assessor is really hard for me to figure out which building they're talking about as a loafing shed, a chicken coop, a tool shed, and another farm utility building. There's two farm utility buildings on here that I'm not sure which one is which, from the cards. We were unnotified when this appraisal was taking place. I would have gladly helped, so we could have made cards readable, but was never notified. So, I'm, I am, again, protesting on lack of equalization and wrongful depreciation based on quality, physical quality of a building that is over a hundred years old. Thank you for your time.
Do you guys have questions for Lane?
Couple hundred, shoot.
Go ahead.
I wish I had more pictures of the, the buildings that you're talking about. The way these, this is organized, and I apologize, it's not your fault. The way these are organized, it's pretty difficult for me to actually follow where, where you're at. I know what property we're on, six sixty-four, right?
Right.
Okay. And you're protesting the value of the house, there's one house.
There's one house there.
One house on that property. You're protesting the, the property value as well as, and the outbuildings, all of them.
Right. And one of the things I didn't mention is the arbitrary, arbitrary and capricious way of placing a value on a home site and a farm site. So, in other words, twenty-five thousand dollars, and you're basing that on a well and septic system. And I understand that. But the well also services agriculture. It's not single for the house. Again, there is no industry within Banner County. There is only agriculture. And is it a house site or is it a farm site, or are we gonna get assessed both?
Is, is the well on the acre?
No.
Is it really a home site without a well, but so, you couldn't sell it to somebody after a well, right?
Right.
And the septic, is it on the, the house acre, or is it separate?
Yes.
Sometimes there, sometimes there.
When we bought this property, the house was non-livable. We had to make it livable if we wanted to put anybody into it. We had to put a septic system in. We had to change the wiring over so it met code. So, I felt like if I put anybody in it, they would be safe. We had to put siding on it because it had no insulation in it from nineteen twenty-some when it was built. The basement is unfinished or partially finished, it's a half basement. Like the Ackerman's, walls are crumbling and we have to continually repair it to keep it livable.
Is it a port foundation or rock combination port foundation?
It was a farm port basement foundation.
You can see each, each foot they added.
You can see each foot, and the stairs going downstairs are uneven because they were hand-built.
Any more comments on the outbuildings? I, you know, I'm a little bit disadvantaged, I don't have any pictures of those outbuildings.
I'm a little bit disadvantaged because even with the property card, I cannot truly tell you which building is which. I also have a list of other parcels that contribute to the evidence of lack of equalization.
Is it got a concrete septic tank or do you know?
No, it has, we had to put a new septic tank in, so we put in a fireglass septic tank with a complete leach line. You know how all those old houses were, they were a cinder block septic tank with no leach line on it, and they got plugged up with tree roots over time.
I don't think I have any more questions.
Are you good? All right, Casey, would you give us your recommendation on that one?
What? Okay, so I'm gonna read these two separate, 'cause I adjusted the code on the building. Um, the house thirty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-three improvements, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-four, and land, uh, no change for three fifty-two, six seventy-eight, for a total of a hundred and sixteen, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-five.
That was for protest number eight, correct? Number six six, the parcel ending in six six four?
Number eight, yep, right.
And who's doing it, Casey? Yes? Protest number nine, Lane and Robin Darnell, parcel number four zero 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 four six two seven. Again, I will abstain from any comments on this one as well.
Do I need to be sworn in again?
I don't.
I am going to drop this protest, I did not have time to prepare for two protests, the whole series of events by not being, getting our property assessment cards until after the first of June, reviewing all of them, being able to look up the data to protest and still get my work done. I only had time to do one. I wish we had more time, but we didn't. The other side of that coin was the proximity of the hearing to the last day that we could file a protest. Seven days difference limited the time for me to get ready. I would ask for more time in the future from the Board of Equalization to get ready for these protests. Simply didn't have enough time to get ready. Thank you.
Guys, any questions on that? Protest number ten, Darnell Ranch, is it nine oh five? Darnell Ranch, parcel number four zero 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 four six two seven. I will abstain from any comments, voting, anything on this parcel as well as it's a conflict of interest.
Ready, sign up. Um, I do solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence I shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Okay, I'd like a little housekeeping here. Um, Darnell Ranch mailed in nine protests. I did get a list saying which protest was first, second, third, fourth, fifth on the schedule. And I'd like to start the first protest with eighteen thirty, zero four zero zero zero, eighteen thirty, which is Darnell Fivat mainly, is what I call it, because it, there will be evidence with that one, which will affect all the others. The other housekeeping thing is I mailed in nine protests, but we have eight on the list. And Casey and I have talked at it, about it and looked at it. Twenty-one ninety-five, the last four numbers, twenty-one ninety-five, weren't scheduled. I know that I put it in the envelope, she can't find it anywhere in her office, I don't know what happened. But I'd like to figure out what we're gonna do on that protest. I don't know if we do that when that time comes or something for you to think about.
I don't think we have to take it in order. I, I'll tell you what, I'm having a hell of a time finding these properties in this block.
So, the ones with the pink are Darnell Ranch. The ones with the yellow are similar properties, or like on this one, for example, the first chunk is the original value of the camisheet. Then, the yellow is what I changed. And then, if you look at the other camisheets, if they have yellow on them, the names are different. So, those aren't Darnell's properties. And then, there is the depreciation schedule with the depreciation highlighted. Then, there's other houses on a spreadsheet with the parcel highlighted. And there's other outbuildings on the spreadsheet, outbuilding highlighted.
The first time is taken, you need to...
Nope, no, I didn't mark it yet.
So, I've got Lane and Robin and Paige, Lane and Robin and...
So, go to number fourteen, 'cause that's what she said she wanted to say.
It should be fourteen, no?
Fourteen. Now, just finding those pages has been a challenge. I'm sorry, I don't know this, you know, I haven't had an opportunity to look. I'll probably through the book, is it? Pete Steppers, I guess, I see the Pead lot here, I got my finger in the Pead lot. That one?
Look at this number right there.
Yeah, I, I understand that part. I'm having trouble finding those numbers for that page.
Do you need help?
And, yep. You can find it for me, 'cause you know where they're at, that's your... Okay, so around eighteen thirty, just on, sure I'm in the right spot? Give me a minute, if you would please to let me at least get, get through it.
No.
So, just on, correct, it, it includes the house down at the old, at the Pead lot?
There's three houses on this parcel, right?
The trailer houses?
Correct.
Okay.
The office?
Yes. A house, a manufactured house, and one house, an office, and other improvements.
So, it would, is nine on, uh, jury orders. So, that would be the end of...
No, no, that's not his protest. If it's yellow highlighted with a different name, it's a similar, your house with a similar condition when I was putting in there, I should have guessed.
Just trying to show you, uh, equalization for comparables for assessed values.
I'll get to the end of this. That all, yes. I'm still good, right? This is part of the...
I can.
Yep.
It's a protest, Lisa.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Just, no, I recognize most of it, I don't really get it. Okay, now I'm at eighteen forty-two, that would be the maximum that I have.
Could go, one, it's a different parcel.
There's several pages here. Okay, if you're ready, I'm ready. I got my finger in here now, I'm good.
I'm doing good.
I'm good.
My name is Lisa Brenner and I'm a part owner of Darnell Ranch Inc., which is the, um, business that owns the, this property. Uh, four, sorry, zero four zero zero zero. Eighteen thirty. I'm gonna give these papers to the board. My math sometimes isn't that good and I ask you to double-check everything, but we amended the protests. Uh, we are asking that land be changed to seven seventy-one ninety-three, buildings be changed to three ninety-one nine sixty-five, which total of one zero nine two one fifty-eight. With this, I've included a comparison sheet that we use. Some are all of the comparisons and listings of what we ask for evaluations of the house based on an owner's opinion. There's also a comparison sheet attached to this. Several comparison sheets from our aspect. There's also a spreadsheet here that I put together that, um, compares different properties showing that there is not equalization in Banner County. There's a court case here called Livingston versus Jefferson County, which on the last page, the opinion of this court case is, "In the context of negotiations between a willing buyer and seller to arrive at a fair market value, the neighboring facility and the house's location would unquestionably affect the market value of the house. Any other conclusion would mean that two identical houses, one next to a railroad switching yard, the other next to a country golf club, have identical values, an obviously arbitrary and illogical conclusion that no reasonable person could reach." I've also included a list of all the comparison properties for all the Darnell Ranch protests tonight, and for your review, a copy of the depreciation table. I've also included a photo which shows paving concrete as you drive down the interstate when concrete is poured for vehicles to drive over it. The first and main significant thing in this is that there is not equalization in Banner County properties for this property or other properties. The depreciation, which affects every property other than land, every improved property in Banner County has some depreciation. It might be zero, it might be two percent, it might be ten percent, it might be whatever. This is the depreciation table that I got from Casey. And before I get into this, Casey's got the hardest job in the county because she has to work with the numbers and make everybody equalized. It's tough, you don't know what you don't know. We all know our properties like the back of our hand and she's trying to make them equal. But the depreciation schedule at the bottom says outbuildings depreciation based on a fifty-year life, which if you actually think about it, in Banner County with the wind and all the elements, nothing has a fifty-year life. But if it's equalized, it's equalized. But it says two percent per year, capping at eighty percent depreciation at age four years for average condition. Okay, so when you look at this schedule, you look at the average column kind of in the middle. The greatest depreciation that it lists there is seventy percent, but the cap's at eighty percent. So, where's the other ten percent go? And according to this depreciation schedule, either the cap is at eighty percent or seventy percent. And when you look at the long list of comparables that I went through, a lot of the improvements had ninety percent depreciation, eighty-five percent depreciation, much over what the depreciation table says. So, this depreciation table makes everything equalize. If you have a property and you don't know the age or whatever, you estimate the age, you go to the depreciation table, you give it depreciation. You don't just randomly and arbitrarily pick a depreciation number, which it appears that that may be what is going on. It doesn't help... It doesn't help also when the contractor that does a mass appraisal or mass information admitted earlier in another protest that the homesite is an arbitrary value. The way you get away from arbitrary value is you take the cost basis less depreciation. Oh, depreciation, you go back to that schedule. So you have to go to cost and figure out what your cost is to put in the well or put in the building or whatever and then depreciate it. If you don't depreciate it according to a schedule, it's not equalized. The feedlot, I put together this, this summary. The, the feedlot ground is being taxed at three thousand dollars an acre.
One minute.
That's random and arbitrary. The improvements on the ground are also being taxed. So if you increase the land value, are you including the improvements? Or do you leave the land value the same or give it no value? Because if you plant crops on the feedlot, you took everything off the top, planted crops, nothing would grow for years. I don't know how long. So do you leave that at zero and then add your improvements? If you add your improvements, they need to be equalized. You can see by this sheet that there are other feeding troughs in Banner County which must make something a feedlot, but those properties are not valued as feedlot. The ground is or may not be increased. There's farm sites on some and feedlot sites on others. On, um, four zero zero one two five ten slash five fifteen, they have a farm site that's point five one acres. Times a thousand equals five hundred and ten bucks. Most other farm sites, I can't say all, are one acre equals one thousand dollars for the farm site value. That's in equalization. It's not just one property that I'm comparing, it's thirty or forty. It's time.
Can I make a comment on the point five one real quick? We have some parcels that are, um, present interests and before they had them separated. Um, so one property, if this is the property I'm thinking it is, I have to look at the parcel number. But some of them that you pulled for comparables, one was a fifty percent interest and one, or fifty-one percent interest and the other was forty-nine percent. So we have to split them between the parcels, so that's why. And I think there's a couple that you pulled that have those.
On the same level, that could be my mistake. I can't speak to that right this second. I'd have to go through the files. And I apologize if that is my mistake. But that doesn't speak to the fact that they're not equalized as to who has farm sites, feedlot sites. I've seen an OG site, I don't know what that means. Different sites and they're not equalized.
So if I understood your testimony correct, they value the land under the feedlot at three thousand dollars an acre?
On, on this parcel, yes. Not on all parcels.
But just under the feedlot?
Right.
So they, I guess...
In my viewpoint, they've double valued it.
Yeah.
They've increased the land significantly, which might be a good idea, then you leave the improvements off of it. Alternatively, you value the improvements and you put the land to zero because it's not going to grow anything. It wouldn't grow grass.
Why did they do it that way? Because I guess I'm just curious.
For a value of your house or your homesite?
The, just the feed.
I know, but it's the same for like, like I can't, oh, we have a homesite value. Then I'm not going to value your house.
So how do you arrive at three thousand dollars an acre for a land? Is that...
And that's, again, we looked at the entire panhandle, all the assessors have gotten together on the feedlots. If it's a commercial feedlot, so if it's over the nine hundred and ninety-nine head, every county in the panhandle is valuing that land at three thousand dollars an acre. So we're just the same as everybody else.
But didn't you just tell us that valuation is within the boundaries of Banner County and not Banner County compared to Scottsville County, compared to Sioux County, compared to...
Not in the eyes of the state.
Correct.
But equalization, as I understand it, has to be within the county.
Right, and so any feedlot that is over that nine hundred and ninety-nine head, the land values are all three thousand an acre for just the feedlot where the feedlot sits.
Not in Banner County?
Yes, it is. If you're, you might have been looking at smaller feedlots that were under that requirement.
So, how do you value the under a thousand head non-commercial animal feedlots?
Because if you're under nine hundred and ninety-nine heads, you do not have to go through the regulations with the DEQ, all those government agencies.
My question was, how do you value those acres under that land?
Three thousand dollars an acre?
No, the ones under, that we did not put the feedlot acres on.
Oh, they're just grass like everybody else's yard is.
So your differentiation is commercial?
Correct.
If you, you're required to have the commercial designation if you're, I'm not sure it's a thousand.
If you're falling under DEQ regulations, you're three thousand bucks if you're under that, you're not. Right, if you're just, if you've got a hundred foot of bunk there, a couple pins, it's just valued as grass.
So what, what is the infrastructure that exists with a commercial?
Well, with a commercial feedlot, you're probably looking at more facilities, you know, you're going to have scales, bins, grain storage, office typically, um...
But aren't those all valued independently?
Correct.
Yeah.
But I'm just, you were asking the differentiation between the two.
Well, in order to, to say this is worth this much, and if it's under, at eleven hundred head, at nine hundred head, it's worth this much, there has to be something that's underneath that feedlot or underneath the ground or on the ground that you're not valuing as personal property that increases the value. And I'm not, I'm not reading that, I guess.
And as to your argument versus the ground underneath the homesite, the, the homesite and then the house, the homesite is valuing the improvements of the electricity, the septic and that, okay? That's separate from the house. But it's still, there's still improvements. So you're valuing two sets of improvements. In the feedlot, you're valuing improvements you can see, but there are no improvements underneath. And the other thing I hope to mention is the automatic waters, another point of unequalization. A water tank versus an automatic water?
Water's water, is that what you're doing?
Well, a tank is different. If you look at some of these comparables and you look at the picture of the tank in the comparable, you can tell that that tank's going to cost you a thousand bucks and this one over here is going to cost you five hundred. But they're all, even though they look visibly different and they caught, the costs new are visibly different, they're valued the same.
But again, those are personal, personal property. They're not taxed as part of the land. No, they are being valued with...
They are an improvement being taxed as automatic waters in the feedlot.
Not familiar with that.
It's on the comparison sheet. And once again, that's an improvement in your depreciation, which is not being followed and is random and arbitrary, is applied to everything, which makes every improvement arbitrary.
I have no more questions.
Questions, please? Casey, do you want to give your, um, recommendation on each one of these parcels? Or do you want to go through them one by one at the very end, which would be easier, be easier? How do you guys want to do it?
I'd assume do it on a parcel.
Okay, so your recommendation on parcel four zero 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 one eight three zero, is that correct?
Um, ending in one eight three zero?
Yes.
Yes. Um, I'm just going to separate it again. The buildings, which would be like the office and the houses, a hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-nine. Um, for the improvements, five hundred thousand four hundred and fifteen. Land, no change.
Slow, slow down a little bit, I can't write quite that fast. Five hundred and what?
Five hundred thousand four hundred and fifteen.
And that, and the home value?
Uh, a hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-nine. No change on land? For a total of one million six hundred thirty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety.
What was the land?
Um, one million four thousand two oh six.
The total was what again?
One million six hundred thirty-nine thousand two hundred and nine.
Thank you.
He's good with Casey?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, are we popping back to parcel protest number ten? I don't know, can I do seventeen oh nine? Which is the north half of the feedlot?
I just got it.
Don't you agree with that?
Yeah, I would have.
Okay. Um, so protest number sixteen, Darnell Ranch. Protest number four zero 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 one seven zero nine. Again, I will abstain from these.
I turned right to it.
Did you go here?
Once again, the numbers are amended. The owner's opinion of value for the land is fifty-three two seventy-six. The owner's value for the buildings and improvements is one twenty-nine ninety-six. The total being, if the math is correct, one seventy-four two seventy-two. I've included a sheet saying, uh, what, what we request that ties to those numbers. Um, I will give this to the board. I'd like to incorporate into this protest all the information that you received for eighteen thirty, especially the depreciation, which is arbitrary and capricious. Really, that's all I have to say. Do you guys have questions for Lisa on this parcel? Seventeen zero nine?
Anywhere.
Did you have questions, Dawn?
Yeah, give me just a second.
Your second's up.
Okay. I don't think I have any questions.
You don't? All right, Casey, if we can get your recommendation on parcel number four zero 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 one seven zero nine? No change. All right, next parcel, Darnell Ranch. Would it be possible to do eighteen twenty-two? That's number fifteen. Lisa's good with that?
It's number fifteen. Let me get the first, yeah. It's got a bunch of pages. I'm just sticking down.
It's gonna be fifteen, right?
Was it after the feedlot? Yeah, so eighteen twenty-two? Okay, find her.
All right, parcel number four zero 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 one eight two two? Good to go? If you put it in the database, you have to do zero four, zero 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 one two two two. I just have four. Mrs. Darnell. I just have four, Mrs. Brenner. Okay. I am giving to the board once again an amended protest. The owner's opinion of value for the land is seven twenty-two fifty-eight. There is no protest on that land. Buildings and improvements seventy-one three ninety-four for a total of seventy-one, seven ninety-one six fifty-two. There's also a sheet of comparisons used and the breakdown of those numbers. We've applied thirty percent depreciation on this house because it is within a mile of the feedlot and as according to the Livingston case, because of all the conditions of the feedlot, that house could not be valued the same if it was not close to the feedlot. I gave another page of pictures and comparisons of outbuildings, farm utility buildings that we used in reference in our valuation. Once again, I want the protest of eighteen thirty, all the evidence and the testimony incorporated into this parcel just as it was in that protest. Major factor being depreciation is arbitrarily assigned to many properties in Banner County.
Just for clarification, this does have the thirty percent reduction or you're asking?
My numbers do.
Okay.
The request does. Any other questions?
This is the sheet that I'd like to see. I, I don't have any questions.
No questions, please?
No.
Casey, can we get your recommendation on four zero 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 one eight two two? No change. Okay, next, Darnell Ranch parcel. I'd like to do with permission of the board nineteen eleven. She's good with that? I'm sorry?
I'm there.
Darnell Ranch, parcel number four zero 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 one nine one one. I'm giving to the board another set of papers. The owner's opinion of value on the land is three oh one oh thirty-two. We are not protesting the land value. The buildings and improvements eighty-one thousand two twenty-four for a total of three eighty-two two fifty-six. I have a sheet attached which, um, covers that breakdown. I need to note that the house is a hundred and three years old. I believe it's categorized as average, if it's not average, it would be fair, fair. I believe it's categorized as average, if it's not average, it would be fair, fair. And it should have 80% depreciation. There's a transient labor house on this property, which on this sheet was purchased for 50,000. It's 15 years old. That would give it 30% depreciation. We valued it at 35,000. It is different, but very similar to manufactured housing. This property also has manufactured housing. So, yeah. There are two manufactured houses on this property, a quonset shed and a pole shed along with the house. I'd like to incorporate in this protest the same information as the other protest, specifically the numbers ending in 1830, a list of comparisons there and the depreciation statement there. Depreciation being the main factor as the all improvements in Banner County are not depreciated before.
Could I ask a question on this one?
Lisa, good, by the chair?
Yep.
Okay.
Please.
I, Casey inspected this one, it wasn't there, those, is there just one cabin or is there two of those that we have listed as transient labor cabins?
Can I answer this? That housing is portable housing. It is, doesn't have wheels under it, you pull it up on a trailer with a live tail and you can move it anywhere. There are, it is one housing unit that is slid together, it's portable in two units.
Okay.
Similar to a double one.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
But not the same.
And then, how old is it?
15 years old.
So, it was moved on 15 years ago, brand new then?
No, no, I bought it five years ago. It was moved every single six month period for 10 years until I bought it. It is a completely portable building.
And should have the physical depreciation of a building that's moved every so many years. Do you guys have questions on this parcel?
I'm having a hard time finding a building to question.
Um, they're right behind the protest sheet. They're the ones that say transient labor cabin under side improvements. The sheet. And then right here.
Okay, all right, all right, got it, got it, all right, thank you.
Questions on this?
Pardon? I ask you.
We have more questions.
Either one had questions for you.
I've got a question for you, Casey. I'm looking at this three-quarter implement shed, quonset, year 1950. And it's valued at $2,224. We, we obviously, it appears anyhow to me that we value those type of sheds much differently than we do housing. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's a quonset.
So, you, you build the right steel building now, it's going to cost you $300 a square foot, of course that's essentially. Which would make that building worth its... Doesn't give it, does it give a square feet there?
Mm-hmm. It's under units?
How many square feet is that?
900.
300 would be $270,000.
You said an insulated steel building would be 200, and this isn't an insulated steel building.
Well, is it an enclosed building or is it open front?
Um, I think, like, can have a door, but I think the door isn't there, right?
It has a sliding door that doesn't work.
Yeah, I've got one of those too. Okay. I was just curious.
Questions on that?
I'm done.
Okay, Casey, if we can get your recommendation on parcel number 40001911?
I'm actually going to wait to give my recommendation on this because when they were talking about those cabins, they said 15 years old and I didn't know that, so. We had them five years old. That's something I'm going to take a look at.
So we're going to have to read, read on those and change it.
Good to move forward? Questions for Casey? Good? All right, next parcel, Darnell Ranch. I'd like to do 4627. Darnell Ranch, parcel number 40004627.
That would be number 18?
10.
Oh, we're going backwards. 4627?
Correct.
I'm not found yet, but I'm, we should have taken.
It should, it gives the first one of Darnell Ranch.
What one was it?
10.
10, okay, I'm almost there.
Look at you go.
You know I'm only looking.
Look, that's mine, I forgot about that.
I'm still looking forward.
Maybe Don would help you.
Yeah, I can, some people help with it. Okay, got it.
I don't have any extra papers for the board, but the owner's opinion of value of land is 135,263. Again, we are not protesting the land value. Buildings and improvements, the owner's opinion of value is 90,275, for a total of 225,538. We base our opinion on the unequalization of land in Banner County with all the evidence and testimony that was presented in parcel ending in 1830. Any questions?
So there's 13 acres, the land is valued, the protest evaluation is 135,263. We're not protesting the land, we're just protesting the building. And more specifically, the basis of depreciation on the building.
Correct, the arbitrary depreciation.
How many square feet is this house?
I have to take it off the card.
Casey?
11, 12.
That's it, so it's a single level on the foundation and basement?
Is there a basement? Yes. Okay.
Yeah. So Casey, did you put the comparables in our packet?
Um, I didn't receive any from Lisa, she's handing you those, but I have like ours.
Because what I'm seeing is the depreciation is very similar onto the, some of these other properties, or in some cases that you actually have a higher depreciation than what some of the other properties have. Is that accurate? And I'm seeing that kind of across the board too, as we, as we go through these.
Yeah, and it's on the spreadsheet as well.
Yeah, if you look at that spreadsheet, she made this pretty helpful.
What spreadsheet are you talking about?
The one I put up for the board with all the protests.
And is that a spreadsheet of comparable properties or all, all properties across the county?
Uh, I didn't do all because that would be really thick for them to look through. Um, so it's year and condition.
Yep, year and condition, based on building size or...
Question for Lisa?
Nope.
Tom?
No, I haven't.
Just release on that part of the sheet.
Yep.
All right, next parcel. Oh, I'm sorry, Casey, your recommendation on 4627.
No change.
Darnell Ranch, next parcel. Uh, 5425, please. Darnell Ranch, protest number 12, parcel number 40005425. Should be number 12.
Uh, once again, we are not protesting land values, just buildings and improvements. The owner's opinion of value for the buildings and improvements is 75,611, land value being 40,364, for a total of 115,975. This opinion of value is based on our knowledge and the fact that others like, other, other parcels are not equalized across more than Banner County, based on arbitrary values placed on it and arbitrary use of depreciation. I'd like to incorporate in this protest all the evidence and the testimony of the parcel protest at last digits of 1830.
Say that again, please.
I'd like to incorporate into this protest all the evidence and information that I gave the board on the protest in the numbers 1830.
Again, for the comparables I'm seeing here, depreciated at a higher rate than what some of the other similar properties are.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you're looking at our comparables or the county's comparables, but when you look across the board at all properties, all are unequalized.
Do you guys good with Lisa, you have questions on this one?
None.
None? Darnell Ranch, next parcel. Oh, I'm sorry, Casey, I keep forgetting you, I'm, I apologize. Recommendation for, for, 5425?
No change.
Okay, now Darnell Ranch, next parcel. I'd like to do 5437. Darnell Ranch, parcel number 40005437.
In this protest of 5437, once again, I'd like to incorporate all the information and testimony in the Darnell Ranch protest of the numbers, parcel numbers ending in 1830. We are not protesting land, our opinion of value is 172,504 for the land. Opinion of value for the buildings and improvements, $5,000, totaling 177,504. The basis for our opinion of value is we know the building, we know what it works, what it does, and the fact that Banner County has failed to equalize improved parcels all across the board in Banner County, especially knowing that depreciation is random and arbitrary.
Any questions?
None. It's just an open-faced loafing shed, essentially.
It's not a loafing shed, Don, technically.
It does have doors on it.
Well, they don't work, but it's an, I think it's arch-ribbed on East Grey House across the road.
It's a three-quarter quonset with no doors on it. It's unskids to move and they're rusted out.
I could give the assessor's recommendation, no change. Don, don't need to wait? Do you want me to read the parcel under, like?
Yeah, please.
Um, parcel ending in 4537, no change. With the pleasure of the board, 5097. Darnell Ranch, protest number 11, parcel number 4005097.
It's number 11.
Oh, it is, sorry. Protest number 11. Thank you. Property ID number ending in 5097. Once again, we are not protesting land value, our opinion, our ownership opinion of value of land is 63,680. The ownership value of buildings and improvements is 50,300, for a total of 113,980. I want to incorporate in this protest all the evidence and testimony based in the parcel ending in 1830. And note that valuations in Banner County are not equalized due to the arbitrary placement of depreciation on all improved, real estate. Improvements, not real estate.
Questions?
Uh, Lisa, how are you arriving at the numbers? At your numbers, based off of?
Based on the knowledge of the building, the cost of construction, depreciation in any other accounting field, taking into account physical depreciation, functional depreciation, external depreciation.
I don't, I guess.
Any questions on Lisa one? Okay, Casey, your recommendations on parcel five zero nine seven? Okay, the last protest we have is, I'm sorry, Lisa, are you good?
Yep.
Protest number nineteen, Ronald and Beth. I'm sorry to interrupt. We had nine protests, the other protests ended in twenty-one ninety-five. I mailed it, it didn't arrive at the office. Am I, are we going to be able to protest that or not? I can't comment.
No, I think if you don't receive it, if you don't receive it.
Our contention is it was received and lost. When the envelope was opened, when I put them in the envelope, I had three envelopes, three protests in each envelope. When I got word from Casey, we only had part of those.
Well, I don't know how.
Casey, did you receive all nine via an email?
I did, but on the second of July, which is after the deadline. And I received eleven on that email.
Which is nine plus the two land value.
I don't think we'll be able to hear any of these.
Moving forward, protest number nineteen, parcel number four zero zero two four five four seven. Is Ron, Ronald or Beth Piper here? Hope I'm saying that right. So we will move into the board equalization decision process, correct? Might I suggest since half of these affect me and I have a conflict of interest, may we do all except Darnell Ranch and Lady Robin Darnell? And then I'm going to excuse myself from the meeting, that way there's no
Perfect.
Conflict in U2's discussion. I'm just not even here. Does that work okay?
Yes. I think that's reasonable.
That means I can go have lunch and you guys are here till like four o'clock.
Perfect.
Are you okay to start with Mr. and Mrs. Ackerman since they are still here?
Yep.
Protest number two, Thomas and Carol Ackerman. So if I have this right, Casey's recommendation, correct me if I'm wrong, is the land five six six two seven stays the same. Buildings. Casey's value was eighty-nine thousand three nineteen and Mr. and Mrs. Ackerman are requesting seventy-nine four four four. Is that right? So with a total of, Casey's number is one four five nine four six. Mr. and Mrs. Ackerman would like it lowered to one thirty-six zero seven one. Got the numbers right? That's not right too?
And Casey's recommendation is the same as the requested, the one thirty-six zero seven one.
Okay, so she agreed with the Ackermans? Okay.
That's right.
So correct me if I'm wrong, we make a motion to accept the requested value with the approval of the assessor. And then list the numbers. You guys want to make the motion in the second and follow with the numbers?
I would move to accept the lower recommendation on property.
I would just use, I would use the protest number and the parcel number.
Protest number two, parcel number.
So let me sheet the second one down.
Four thousand two thirty-seven.
Two thirty-five.
There it is. Zero four zero 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 two three five seven is the parcel number. And it would be lowered from one forty-five nine forty-six to one thirty-six oh seventy-one. That is my motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the protest of number two, parcel number four zero 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 two three five seven, Thomas and Carol Ackerman, lowering the value to one thirty-six zero seven one. Any further discussion? Roll call vote? Tom?
Yes.
Robyn? Yes. Please?
Yes.
Thank you for coming today. Beverly Edens. Protest number one, parcel number four zero zero one four seven four seven.
I would move to leave on parcel, protest one, parcel number zero zero four zero zero one nine seven four seven at no change.
It's one four seven.
Did I read it right?
No.
One four seven four seven. And I would leave it at two thirty-five oh eighty, oh thirty-eight.
I'll second that motion, but I do have a question.
Okay, hold on. It's been moved and seconded to leave the value increased on protest number one, Beverly Edens four zero zero one four seven four seven. Any further discussion? At two thirty-five, two hundred and thirty-five thousand zero thirty-eight. Any further discussion?
Yes. The additional price increase onto this, what is this based off of?
Land sales in there.
Land sales, so the land is, the grass sales, land selling for more than what it did five years ago. So therefore that this is reflecting the increase in value of property. And it's proportionate to everything else that's went on in Banner County? It's right in line, so anybody's increases is similar?
Yes, everybody's, grass and CRP increases same per soil code.
Same per across the board, there's no
No difference.
Okay, very good.
So all CRP ground per acre is valued the same, whether it's got a well, fence, or?
It's per soil code.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Per soil code. So there's like different within it, and this is the same for dry grass, irrigated, everything. Per soil code, it's valued differently. But everybody in that soil code, if it's grass, is the same. Everybody in that soil code, CRP same, everybody in that soil code, dry same. Do you want to look at your spreadsheet? Look at the sheet. Sorry. Which one are you on? So, seed grass, these are soil codes, and these are from the state. Control of that, and it associates with these soil codes. And then this, I guess, is that OEGI code. So you see per acre, like these numbers are different than that number. But like anybody in this and this is that. Anybody in this and that is that.
That's probably the only way to fairly do it.
Yes, I have to do it.
Regardless of the amount of rainfall.
Regardless of the rainfall.
Didn't we have another CRP one?
We did. But their soil type will be different, so therefore their code will be different. Is that accurate?
CRP should not be different, right?
Yeah, it's based on soil type.
CRP might have all sand, and somebody else's CRP might be a better quality soil, so they won't be valued the same because it's by soil class.
Sand doesn't grow as well as loam, as an example.
Yeah.
So loam is more valuable.
But even when you look at Ackermans versus Edens, it's, the value difference is negligible.
I'm sorry?
The value difference is negligible based on their soil types.
I'm not doubting you, I'm just wanting to follow what I'm talking about.
Right after he means right there. So when you look at the CRP type.
Got you. So soil is different between the C P R.
Yes, that's what, that's what the taxes.
Sorry, I'm just trying to track the
I understand you.
And that's accurate? All right.
So therefore, therefore, my point being, Edens property is valued the same as the Ackerman property. I mean, it's to the
According to the standards of
On Ackermans, we did not lower land, correct? It was only buildings they were protesting, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. On the other hand, Edens are protesting the land because there's no buildings on it.
Correct. And the increase, but the increase is due to the cost of property sales. Selling for five hundred per acre and one.
And doesn't the state dictate land basically?
I get my soil codes from the state, yes, and I have to use it, and they also look at the percentages of everything. And that's everything, not just land.
Okay, I'm just trying to track the processes here. All right. It's been moved, are you guys good with discussion? Tony, you good?
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to leave the valuation on protest number one, parcel number four zero zero one four seven four seven, Beverly Edens. Increases to two hundred and thirty-five thousand thirty-eight dollars. Roll call vote? Tom?
Yes.
Robyn?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Okay, Rod and Kathy Van Pelt, number, protest number three.
And what was your recommendation on this one, Casey?
Let me get to it, hold on. Hold that thought, Casey.
For the one.
You can go to the very back. Yes. My seat, she sort of thought to miss the top. Mine is the future, so that's mine.
Oh, okay. Not, not current.
Not current, that's
Land no change and the mobile home, you agree with them on?
Yeah. I had reviewed the property before they turned in their form.
So you're recommending the land remains at twenty-six thousand two oh seven. Buildings you lowered to eighty-four thousand seven fifty-six with a total of one ten nine sixty-three? Are those numbers accurate?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's based on the fact that it's a mobile, not a modular?
Yes, the only thing we changed was, you can see the
Okay, so that's, that's still a fairly No, that's not, never mind.
We didn't change anything but the type to from a single family to manufactured house, and that's mobile home.
You just recoded it to mo two.
It's still a substantial increase from where it was?
Yeah.
And that, that's across the state? Is that accurate, the home value?
County.
County.
Yeah, and it's, nothing's a percent increase except land, of course. But we did see significant, significant increases in a lot of houses.
And housing.
And outbuildings.
And does that change the same for each parcel?
Dollar wise, no.
Dollar, but the, the percentage?
No.
No? And that's based on your depreciation and your
Yes, because it was a full reno.
So the home values would have been based on sales in the county?
Right. Understood.
Okay. Are you all in commotion on that?
It was, it was recommended to drop down. You got it done?
Not the land, the, the buildings was lowered by our assessor.
So protest number three, parcel zero four zero zero one one two four zero, Rod and Kathleen Van Pelt. The new land evaluation will remain the same at twenty-six thousand two oh seven. The building value will be changed to eighty-four thousand seven fifty-six for a total of one hundred and ten thousand nine sixty-three. I am moved to accept that recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the recommendation of our assessor on protest number three, parcel number four zero zero one one two four zero. Land value to remain the same at twenty-six thousand two oh seven. Buildings are lowered to eighty-four thousand seven fifty-six, bringing the total land and buildings to one hundred and ten thousand nine sixty-three. Any further discussion? Roll call vote? Tom?
Yes.
Robyn?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Protest number four, Julie Rogers. I have not looked at this one. What was your recommendation on this one, Casey?
Fifty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-seven.
Based on condition?
It, what, in your build? So, we had it as two thousand and one, and she provided proof that it was actually built in nineteen ninety-nine.
Correct.
So that adjusted the depreciation on it according to the table. The condition was also three, it was average before, and it had fair depreciation. So that was a mistake that I caught, that I made. So it already had fair depreciation previously when it was in two thousand twenty-one. But now it reflects like, the condition is showing too, and the depreciation is also reflects that.
So their, their request for the buildings was thirty-eight thousand three three six. Your recommendation is fifty-two thousand one eighty-seven, which is still lower than what was because of the because of the evidence.
Yeah, and it's in there, she provided proof that it was built in nineteen ninety-nine.
Okay. Thanks, Casey.
Says double Y or a module?
It says mobile home.
Yeah, double Y and module. Or not module, sorry.
Double Y.
Yeah, manufactured home.
You all want to make a motion?
The class code says mobile home, just to clarify.
Yeah, it's the same as what I, what Van Pelt was corrected to. It says that manufactured home at the top.
Make a motion, protest number four, parcel number four zero zero two three six zero eight, to accept the lower valuation at fifty-two thousand one eighty-seven. Did we get that right?
I think so. I will second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the assessor's numbers on protest number four, parcel number four zero zero two three six zero eight, Julie Rogers, valuing the buildings at fifty-two thousand one eighty-seven, building. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Dawn?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Protest number five, Cross Family LLC, parcel number four zero zero one four three five.
I would move to accept the assessor's recommendation of no change on parcel zero four zero 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 one four three five. Protest number five for the Marta Joan Cross, Cross Family LLC.
On that one, the.
Hold on, we got a motion on this one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the assessor's recommendation of no change on parcel number, protest number five, parcel number four zero 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 one four three five. Any further discussion? Sorry, Casey.
Um, the, the protest evaluation wrote in that column isn't the twenty twenty-five valuation. So if you look at the, the sheet with the yellow lines.
I wondered if it was the same.
Yeah. The current isn't the twenty twenty-five value.
I'm sorry?
Where it says current on that sheet with the yellow, that's the twenty-five value, not what's on the protest form.
Okay, so, so what do we want, hold on just a second, so what do we want to value this at? What do you recommend, the twenty-five one twenty-two?
Yes, because that's no change.
What was her, what was her protest?
No, she wrote this in twice.
So it went up?
Not even.
A thousand?
Between, this is twenty-five one twenty-five.
Right, yours is twenty-five one one two.
That is with me changing nothing.
I'm sorry, Casey?
And that is with me changing nothing.
Okay, so no change at twenty-five thousand one twenty-two. Would you, would you like to withdraw your motion or restate? Sorry, there's a point. I'm sorry, what did you want to add?
I would like to amend that motion to read twenty-five thousand one twenty-two instead of twenty-four thousand eight fifty-eight, a random correct price.
Are you okay with the amended motion?
Second. That's two hundred and sixty-four dollars difference.
It's been moved and seconded to take the assessor's recommendation on protest number five, parcel number four zero 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 one four three five, valuation to be twenty-five thousand one twenty-two, Cross Family LLC. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Dawn?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Protest number six, Cross Family LLC, four zero 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 one four two three. Oh, there is a five.
I would move to accept the assessor's recommendation of no change on parcel zero four zero 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 one four two three. Protest number six for the Marta Joan Cross, Cross Family LLC. And the value of that was sixty-seven thousand three twenty-three. Did I get the right value this time?
Yes.
I learn from my mistakes sometimes.
Oh, second, yeah, sorry.
It's okay, Lee, hold on a minute. It's been, it's been moved and seconded to accept the assessor's recommendation on protest number six, parcel number four zero 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 one four two three, valuation sixty-seven thousand three twenty-three. Correct, Casey?
Yep.
Roll call, any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Dawn?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Protest number seven, Cross Family LLC, four zero, protest number, parcel number four zero 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 one five three nine. Recommendation on this one, Casey, is the, from one seventeen to one twenty-nine?
Yeah, my recommendation is one twenty-nine.
Two thirty-one. Is this just grassland?
Again, based on comparable sales to everything in the area, this is not out of line with, but this is the same.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
We have no buildings, it's just grassland, correct?
Correct.
I'm going to accept the assessor's recommendation of no change to property identified by number zero four zero 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 one five three nine, which is protest number seven by Marta Joan Cross, Cross Family LLC. And that value will be one twenty-nine two thirty-one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the assessor's recommendation on par, protest number seven, parcel number four zero 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 one five three nine. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Dawn?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
At this point in time, I'm going to call a brief recess at ten forty-five, and I'm going to excuse myself from the meeting and let you guys do Lain and Robert and Darnell and so. There is no confusion. Want me to bring you lunch? Happy to. Can I run and make those changes on, on the parcel number?
Please do that.
Is it with a little break here?
Yeah.
I think it's just better this way. No questions.
Right.
And we need Tuesday.
Yeah, make this one go.
Just put that little kind of swag swag here, I guess. None of your business. I'm going to town.
Bring this by when I get fixed.
Um, probably won't be there very long, so.
Okay, I'll have it with me all day, just call me if you need me.
I'm glad you recognize it when I restart, advance the confusion.
Thought I better ask.
I'm glad you recognize it when you leave the event the confusion.
I get to that point, maybe later today.
I was going to prep mine before I, before this started, and I, uh.
Yeah, see you on Tuesday.
Still working.
All right. Yeah, I was.
No problem.
I don't think so.
Most of the time it's a, you have a woman.
I just want to come in, I want to come in off the cameras.
So do I have, like, signed sheets and scrubbing?
Since she was excused, hillside.
Are we supposed to have this recessed, stopped it, and then restarted?
Still on camera?
On camera.
We know. It's been busy. It's been busy.
Sticky, that's true.
That's okay.
Just looking a lot faster, I had sticky notes.
I was thinking about that, maybe next year, um, I'll suggest to Casey to tab the sides, like where, that says like one, two, like with the number of projects. We had to do that with something else in my office. Oh, it was for elections. And the, um, my election workers, they suggested that.
I'm only seeing about half, and it's just really hard for me to flip through all those pages. Some of those, some of them got forty pages in them. Flip through those pages just to get to the next one.
Yeah, I, because when I, when I did my first elections, I didn't tab it. And then the election workers were like, hey, could we tab these? And I said, that's a really good suggestion. So I did it in the, um, the general, and it went, everything went by a lot smoother. So I'll let, I'll give Casey that suggestion.
It just, you know, out of sidecap degree. So we did do a pair of shelves. Oh, they do.
Reschedule.
They, they what?
We have to reschedule.
Glad I could go. It's not going to have to do that. I probably shouldn't be here. My wife would tell you I shouldn't be here. This one, condition, the last time, the one is fair, now it's an average. It changes the appreciation. So the one is on the top. And then you depreciate around seven percent, seven, eight percent, seven.
I didn't have time to do that, because I got the last one yesterday. Sorry.
Ready to roll, Dawn?
Uh, give me just about a second here. And of course, that's a figurative, so it was or mandatory or whatever you need. I got about, any more to find? It'll speed up the process, I hope.
Yes? It's come out of break at, uh, ten fifty-six.
Okay. So we're on number eight?
We're on protest number eight, parcel number zero four zero 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 six six four. Lain and Robert Darnell.
Okay, so the assessor has recommended some change and update for on the buildings.
On the building value?
Uh, yeah, I, um, Lain talked about that hundred and fifty by eighty building. You can see in the pink, it was the code L C U V, and I corrected that to F U B L, which it was before. And that's the, the reason, the difference.
So it went from commercial to?
That's just the name of it.
Okay, but it's back to a farm property instead of a commercial building?
So what did you lower the value to?
Um, this is four fifteen one oh four, for that building, and with the new code, and, oh, I also adjusted the wall. We added a sandwich panel, and Lain showed me the inside of it, so we corrected that as well. Um, and it's three oh one seven twenty-eight for just that, that one building.
Did you adjust the value of the house, Lynn?
I did not.
Okay, so recommend, or I move to accept the assessor's recommendation. Okay, so recommend, or I move to accept the assessor's recommendation for property zero four zero 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 six six four. Protest number eight for Lane and Robin Darnell. To keeping the land value the same at three hundred and fifty-two thousand six seventy-eight. The building value is changing to two hundred and, three hundred and one seven twenty-eight?
That, that was just that building.
I'm sorry?
That was just that one building.
Okay. So two fifty-nine oh nine oh, which one? It's which number? Okay, so the building value will be thirty-eight six twenty-three.
What is it?
That's the house.
Says buildings.
Buildings, the improvement value would be three seventy-eight six twenty-four.
Correct. And the total, the land value would be three fifty, three fifty-two six seventy-eight, which represents no change for a total value of seven hundred and sixty-nine nine twenty-five. Is that your recommendation?
Yes.
Can you repeat that, please? Because buildings and other improvements are added together, and I didn't catch it. What I requested was two fifty-six nine ninety-eight.
Show me the pages. Show me the pages again. Oh, I got one more.
The house is listed at thirty-eight?
Yes, six twenty-three.
And then the other improvements, which would be the other buildings on the property? Is it three seventy-eight, six twenty-four?
Yes, and on the protest forms, they are combined into just buildings.
Got it.
Okay.
So that total number is what? Buildings and other improvements?
The building plus the, the house? The improvements plus the, the house?
Is that your question?
Yes, all the buildings total together.
Total value, four seventeen two forty-seven.
Come show me the number in case. But you recommend, so that's a recommend.
Okay.
All right.
So did you take the tool shed off as ten by ten by eight that wasn't owned by me?
No, that wasn't actually the one that they lived in. Do you remember when we were talking? It was this one that's right next to the house.
That's not mine.
And that one's not there anymore?
Never has been mine. So, we want to withdraw that motion? Okay. Okay, move to accept the assessor's recommendation for property zero four zero 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 six six four. Protest number eight for Lane and Robin Darnell. I'm reading off page one here. The building value is thirty-eight thousand six twenty-three. The improvements is three hundred and seventy-eight thousand six twenty-four. The land in lot is three hundred and fifty-two thousand six seventy-eight for a total of seven hundred sixty-nine thousand nine twenty-five.
Now is there discussion, or you have to?
Now, yeah, it's open for discussion. I'll second, I'll second, now it's discussion.
Uh, Lane just mentioned that the ten by ten?
Yes, that tool shed, ten by ten by eight. Never belonged to me, and it was, again, it's a movable building, a portable building that was owned by the last occupants of the house.
And they took it with them.
And they took it with them. Again, that's, that was part of my discussion in my protest, is that with the card, I couldn't tell which building was what. And, and we looked at the sketch, and I still can't figure that sketch out, because some of those buildings are gone.
That would be number sixteen.
And we couldn't discuss that, because we, I ran out of time in that five-minute limit.
Okay, so that's now the view. Let's just put that under here.
Is that you?
Yeah. Six five one one.
House and buildings together.
Can I withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
You withdraw your second.
I withdraw my second.
I do withdraw, okay. You got the number better than I do at this point, huh?
Okay. I'd make the motion, um, tax protest number eight, Lane and Robin Darnell, parcel number zero four zero 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 six six four. To have the building and improvement combined value at four fifteen one twenty-eight, one twenty-four. And the land value to stay the same at three fifty-two six seven eight for a total of seven six seven eight oh two. Second. Roll call vote, please.
Done?
Yes.
Um, Robin? Lee?
Yes.
Number nine oh?
Yep.
Okay, and your recommendation on this again, so I can...
I withdrew it.
You withdrew it.
I withdrew it, because I didn't have time to prepare for it.
So do we need to, no action deal or anything?
No, that's what you're, that's what you're throwing, you can't act now.
Okay, alright. Protest number ten, property identification number zero four zero 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 four six two seven. Darnell Ranch, Inc. The assessor's recommendation is no change?
Correct.
I move to accept the rec, recommendation of the assessor of no change for zero four zero 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 four six two seven. Darnell Ranch Incorporated, protest number ten.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, right now.
So we're not allowed for external depreciation?
Apparently not.
Oh, you took down the ones.
Roll call vote, please.
Oh, done?
Yes.
Robin? Lee?
Yes.
Ready for twelve?
Yep.
Move to accept the assessor's recommendation on protest number twelve, property ID number zero four zero 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 five four two five.
Right. I think you...
We skipped eleven, but we'll come back to it.
Okay. Land value would be forty thousand three six four. Building value is seventy-five thousand six eleven. Total land and buildings is one fifteen nine seventy-five.
Is discussion time now?
Yes.
That's the requested value?
That's the requested value.
Lane, you almost got off here. Lisa?
Again, in the comparables were provided, it does, it shows your depreciation to be at a similar point to other properties in the county.
What comparables?
Uh, I've got several up here in front of me.
Provided by whom?
Uh, by our assessor.
What about our comparables?
I have not reviewed those.
I'm going to amend my motion to change the property values to the right values, again. Land value would be forty thousand three sixty-four. The building value is seventy-five thousand six eleven for a total value. That's the same number?
Mm-hmm. Need to read the other column.
Oh, the next one down?
No.
Ah, okay.
The requested, or the protested column.
No, I may never read it right. You want to come show me? I'm seeing them one eye right now, so... Yeah, oh, okay. So the valuations are right there. So the valuation would be land forty thousand three sixty-four, buildings one forty-five two sixty. Total land and buildings value, I think that's one eighty-five six twenty-four. Is that right?
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Done?
Yes.
Robin? Lee?
Yes. Let's do number eleven.
Move to accept the assessor's recommendation on protest number eleven, property ID number zero four zero 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 five zero nine seven. Those values are sixty-three thousand six eight hundred, eighty. Fifty, sixty-three thousand six eighty, sixty thousand six twenty-four for a total land and buildings value of a hundred and twenty-four three oh four.
That's, that's not my recommendation, that's Lisa's request.
Where's your recommendation?
Didn't you read sixty-three thousand six eighty?
Sixty-three thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was my fault.
Damn, I got it right?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Second. I have no discussion, Mr. Chairman.
No discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Done?
Yes.
Robin? Lee?
Yes.
We are to number thirteen. We are tracking correctly. I don't even need that.
I have a question on number thirteen, Casey.
Okay.
Uh, the building that is requested in value here is, is not a permanent structure, is my understanding. It is, it is a movable unit. In the comparables, it does not seem to accommodate for that. I'll make a motion recommending that we keep the land value at one seventy-two five oh four. The building value at five thousand for a total land and building value of one seventy-seven five oh four.
Second.
Yep.
Is there given any extra consideration to?
Unfortunately, I still have to value them.
Value them. One second.
Okay, discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Done?
Yes.
Robin? Lee?
Yes.
Fourteen? I'm going to do, let's see, you had some changes in here. Did you have some changes on this one?
I do, yes.
I just want to make sure before I...
Let's get the right numbers in fourteen first, please.
I missed it, what parcel, please?
The one that we just voted on, or the one on current?
Eighteen thirty, current.
Current, eighteen thirty, yes.
You ready for me?
Come in.
When I went out with Lane and did a review again, he showed me the bunker silo. Um, and I provided those pictures where the rebar sticking through in some of it. Um, and he told me the different year builds on it, and I verified that with aerials. So we adjusted... So we adjusted the bunker into three different chunks, which is reflected on the camera sheet that has the yellow highlighting on it of the three at the bottom. And then for the value I recommend, it's the very last page of the protest, the sheet with the yellow in the feature column.
Do you please read those numbers to me?
Uh, let me add them up so they're all together instead of separate. Um, house and office and it, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine. And then the, um, improvements too. Sorry, I should have read them all together. Um, six hundred and thirty-five, zero, eight, four for all of the buildings.
Six, eighty-five.
Six thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Zero, eight, four.
Okay.
No change on the land at one, zero, zero, four, two, zero, six.
Okay.
For a total of one million, six hundred, thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety.
Did you adjust the values of depreciation on the feedlot or the pad?
No, I just did the bunker silo.
Did you adjust the depreciation values for the bunker silo?
Yes, that's the one I did. And I separated it into the years you talked to me about.
So how long of the depreciation schedule do you have on the bunker silo?
It's the same as the rest. It's the fifty-year.
You wish you could get it to last that long. I didn't tell right now.
Um, the thing is, if it gets, you know, I realize those get beat up. And when it's poor condition, then you're at ninety-five percent and that's where it stays until it's completely removed.
Are you ready, sir?
That's not what your depreciation schedule says?
Uh, I don't think you've got the outbuilding, the house depreciation schedule and the outbuilding.
I'm talking about specifically the cement in the feedlot and on the feed pad. And as a depreciation, they last twenty years. But we only get to depreciate in over fifty-year with up to an eighty percent level. Is that correct?
In average condition.
If you take it down to a fair condition, but...
I'm going to move to accept the assessor's recommendation, recommended changes on protest number fourteen, property identification number zero four, zero, 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 one, eight, three, zero. And those values are, the land will remain the same at one million, four thousand, two hundred and six dollars. The buildings will be decreased to six hundred and thirty-five thousand and eighty-four dollars. The total landed buildings value is one million, six hundred and thirty-nine, two, nine, zero.
Two, zero, right. Oh, two, nine, okay.
Two, nine, zero, six and eighty-four.
Second. Discussion?
I have none.
Roll call vote, please.
Done?
Yes.
Robin? Lee?
Yes.
Number, protest number fifteen, I move to accept the assessor's recommendation of no change. That is property identification number zero four, zero, 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 one, eight, two, two. And the values would be seven, seven hundred and twenty thousand, two fifty-eight for the land, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, six eighty-eight for the buildings. For a total of nine hundred and fifty-three, nine forty-six.
Second. Roll call vote.
Done?
Yes.
Robin? Lee?
Yes.
So you're allowing no external depreciation?
That's the recommendation of the assessor. Protest number sixteen, property identification number zero four, zero, 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 one, seven, zero, nine, or seven? I've got a little... Is it seventeen oh nine or seventeen oh seven?
Nine, nine.
I was unsure. I'm going to correct that. For Darnell Ranch, Inc., I'm going to recommend we accept the assessor's recommendation of no change. Land value of one seventy-three, zero, thirty-six. Buildings four fifty-five, six seventy-six. Prior land and total buildings, six twenty-eight, seven twelve.
Second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Done?
Yes.
Robin? Lee?
Yes.
Protest number seventeen for Darnell Ranch, Inc., property identification number zero four, zero, 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 one, nine, one, one. And then, uh, Casey is going to... Did you get the revalue down?
Yes, so we adjusted the year built on those cabins and adjusted the depreciation accordingly. So I should have already added these on. Sorry. So the buildings, my recommendation is hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three.
And the land will stay the same?
Yes.
And that value was?
Um, three hundred thousand, or, three, zero, one, zero, three, two.
Okay, total?
Four hundred and forty-five thousand, eight twenty-five.
Okay, so we'll accept the assessor's recommendation. And the new values, the land will stay the same at three, zero, one, zero, three, two. The buildings will be changed to one forty-four, seven ninety-three for a total value of four forty-five, eight twenty-five.
Second. Discussion?
What was the building classification for that portable building then?
Transient labor cabin.
What is that? Transient labor cabin. Is that modular, mobile? What is that?
It's just a housing for hired help.
So is that higher or lower than modular?
It would be lower than a mobile home. If we ran it as a mobile home, it would be higher.
That's the question. Okay, thank you.
If we ran it as low as we could, we did low quality on it.
Roll call vote, please.
Done?
Yes.
Robin? Lee?
Yes.
That would bring us to number nineteen.
Number nineteen.
Protest number nineteen, and I assume it says a zero in front of it, just like all of them?
Yeah.
Uh, property identification number zero, four, zero, zero, two, four, five, four, seven. Ronald and Beth Pfeifer. And your recommendation is no change?
Yes.
And I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor. So if I get the right numbers, it's twenty-five, three hundred for the land, eighty-five thousand, nine forty-nine for the buildings. Twenty-two thousand, eight, no.
Go to the other column. Same sheet you were on, the protest form.
The one down. So it's a hundred and seventeen. Cause I, I'm having trouble tracking. I must tell you honestly. Oh, those are ac, the actual, those are right for one? Okay. So the value is, uh, the land is twenty-five, three hundred, buildings is one oh eight, seven ninety-six. Total land value with buildings is one thirty-four, zero ninety-six. That is my motion.
Second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Done?
Yes.
Robin? Lee?
Yes. That's it? That's it? That's it, so we are at eleven-thirty?
Okay.